Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. This, uh, whatever, Monday, June 10th. I apologize that we're a little late here. Let's just see here. Sorry. We're delayed on my behalf, I'll just out that. So, the council welcomes you and thanks you for being a part of our city government at workshop meetings. The council discusses issues, but we take no formal action. Agenda packets are available for those following online at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda for those in attendance back at the small table on the right. The meeting is also being televised live to PSC TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and in Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and via YouTube and GoToWebinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. The public may submit comments or ask questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or through the Pasco Ask Pasco app. We do have Mr. Cruz, for those present on my back right, our Spanish interpreter, if there are services needed here physically. One thing I will remind folks is that at workshop meetings, we do now offer the opportunity for public comment on each item in the items for discussion. That's Section 6. What we do offer in these types of meetings is two comments per side, per issue. Fundamentally, one in support, or two in support and one opposing. Up to two minutes each, so public comment could be a total duration of eight minutes per topic, assuming there were two folks on each side. So with that, Ms. Clerk?
Rule call, Councilmember Barajas.
Present.
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Present.
Councilmember Grimm.
Here.
Councilmember Harpster.
Present.
Councilmember Peralas.
Present.
Mayor Proten Milney.
I'm present.
And Mayor Serrano.
I am present. We are all present. And now you can please stand with me and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number four, which is verbal reports from council members, if any council members has anything to report on. Mr. Grimm, do you have anything?
No, sir, not at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other lights, that'll move us on to item number five, which is public hearings. We're gonna have Mr. Gonzalez give the second public hearing on the 2025 to 2030 Transportation Improvement Plan. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm gonna try to move the slide with the remote. Oh, perfect. Thank you. So, yes, this is a second public hearing for the 2025-2030 Transportation Improvement Program. Similar to last week, wanted to provide council with an overview of the draft preliminary project list. We do wanna let council know that we are still working on producing the tip sheets. Those are the sheets that have the project, the maps with the details, descriptions, and funding allocations for those projects. And we aim to get those to you ASAP. But within the proposed tip, as it sits so far, are approximately 50 projects. Ten of those are new projects, considering pavement preservation, intersection improvements, access for pedestrians and bicycles, and safety improvements. The estimated cost, and this is still subject to change, is roughly $261 million over the program period, with funding sources from secured and planned grants, local funds, and private contributions. Next slide, please. The 10 new projects as proposed, and these could certainly still change, include pavement preservation for Lewis Street, pavement preservation for Ainsworth Avenue, the demolition of the Lewis Street underpass, interchange improvements at Broadmoor and Interstate 182, addressing the gaps in the bicycle and pedestrian system, neighborhood traffic calming program, a comprehensive safety action plan, a citywide injury minimization and speed management program, improvements at the Commercial Avenue and Karchner Street intersection, that's up in the 395 area, and then an analysis and program for sign reflectivity related to stop signs across the city. Next slide. The next several slides are the tables of all the projects as they currently sit today. And the next, I happen to answer any questions of both Director Sarah and I, if there's any questions in particular about the list as it exists today. And it goes through the planned projects based on the feasibility of completing these projects over the six-year time period. Next slide. And next slide. These are the studies and the programs that are new to the tip. Wanted to show council and the public, we are nearing website completion that will display essentially a dashboard of all of the projects, both the status and the project type. So these numbers are certainly subject to change, based on the final list and the draft list as a near completion. But this will show a little bit more interactive opportunities for how to view the projects and certainly shows the diversity of projects proposed in the tip, ranging from those that are citywide, improvements, maintenance, signal intersections, or those related to non-motorized projects as well. And then on the next slide is a map that we've been sharing with the public at our open houses that, hard to see it on this screen, but illustrates the projects across the entire city, trying to address all of the modes of transportation to meet the needs of businesses and community members. We've held several open houses. In fact, last week, I think both Director Sarah, myself, and several staff from both Public Works and Community and Economic Development were at three open houses last week. One, it was Tuesday with the Pasco Police Department at their community outreach event. And then last Wednesday and Thursday, we were at Cafe Conarte and also Kurtzman Park. And we have a few pictures on the next two slides to show some of those events there. I think roughly, an estimate of roughly 20 or so folks have been, at least at the last two events, at the open houses. Diversity of questions there to answer questions, comments, concerns from members of the community was really awesome to get out into the neighborhoods and talk about the projects and answer questions from community members as well. We've also been fortunate, on the next slide, you'll see to receive quite a lot of help from our social media, from our media partners in the region, 610 KONA, and also Apple Valley News and KVIEW advertised and shared our open house events with community members as well. So certainly thankful for their assistance in that effort. On the next slide, we summarized at a high level some of the main feedback that we've heard so far throughout these open house events. Certainly looking forward to hearing more over the next couple of weeks. And at a high level, that is the limited access on Interstate 182. This has been something we've heard about for many, many years. Concerns about limited access points to the interstate, in particular between Road 68 and US 395. The expansions occurring both north and south of Interstate 182 on Road 100 and Broadmoor Boulevard. Heard a lot about the, you know, it's easy to see and point out all the new development happening across the city. So fielded quite a bit of questions about how we plan, require, and develop infrastructure associated with development projects across the city. Quite a bit on those expansions along Road 100 and Broadmoor, Chapel Hill, Road 68, Argent, et cetera. And then also quite a bit of comments and concerns related to the gaps in the sidewalk infrastructure across the city as well. So neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks, including comments about neighborhoods without any lights, et cetera. So heard a little bit about that as well. So hearing a diversity of comments from members of the public. I think overall, staffs felt comfortable addressing these comments with some of the program studies and projects identified on the tip. Certainly looking forward to refine that for council. And on the next slide, we do have one more open house scheduled for tomorrow, June 11th, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. This will be located at Delta High School, will be in their, Delta High School. Will be at their cafeteria at 5801 Broadmoor Boulevard. Will be there with maps, comment cards, links to our comment form to answer questions, comments, concerns from our community members as well. And then in terms of schedule with council on the next slide, obviously, we're here today with a public hearing. Given that we're still working on refining and getting those tip sheets and wanting to make this list complete for council and the public, probably a need to extend and hold that special meeting on June 24th. So next week, we can provide council with the tip sheets with some time to review those and then come back on the 24th with potential determination for council. And then that'll be sent to the state for certification and will be ongoing. So that concludes this presentation. And both myself and I think Director Sarah happened to answer any questions from council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Do we have any questions from council before we open the public hearing? Just one thing, Mr. Gonzalez. Are we aggregating online the comments in any way that we dispose of them? I see you had nods.
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, you were drinking, I apologize. I saw Ms. Sarah had nods, so maybe I should have dropped it. Okay, go ahead. We are, is I?
Yes, yes, we are. That's, we've collected the comment cards, we've transcribed them, and those will be provided to council in full at next week's meeting.
Okay, and as well as the public?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that's my main thing is that as we continue. One, I appreciate that we're having these several workshops that are open to the public. Again, there's one tomorrow, Delta High School, as you just said, but I wanna reiterate that. And I also appreciate that you're all aggregating those comments that will be open publicly. Mr. Peralas?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I'll go ahead and just make a comment on the, Mayor, it was a while back. I was talking with Adam Lincoln about, sorry, City Manager Lincoln, about Row 44 and that canal, and then about extending it, that sidewalk, because a lot of people are concerned because they have to go across that little canal bridge. And so I'll go ahead and just put it on the record that could be something that we could add to the sidewalk component of some of the things we added. So just wanna get down the record.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas. Seeing no further lights by council, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing here with the gavel. Once I gavel in, I'll ask for public comments. You'll have two minutes on the clock. The distinction here, I wanna draw between what I mentioned about public comment is, notwithstanding there are about four people here. There, you know, anyone can speak at the public hearing, so it's not limited to the two and two. So this one, it will be open, so I'm gonna gavel in. And, okay, the public hearing on the, the second public hearing on the public, on the 2025-2030 Transportation Improvement Plan is now open for public comment. Do I have anyone in the audience that wants to provide a comment? Seeing no movement, do I, I'm gonna give you a second. All right, seeing still no movement, I'm gonna offer a third opportunity for public comment. Okay, Mr. Rice, do we have anyone online who's indicated or requested the opportunity to public comment on this issue? And I wanna draw the distinction, the question is not whether folks are online, but whether someone's actually signed in and indicated the desire to offer comments.
Have not indicated and recognize everyone online.
Okay.
So I think we're good, thank you.
Well, with that, there are no public comments. I'm gonna close the public hearing and we'll move along to item number six. Now, item number six, again, as I mentioned, this is the one where we're gonna, we do have opportunity for public comment, two comments pro, two comments con, up to two minutes per comment. The first, item A, is ordinance, a new ordinance, section 9.80.035, sitting, lying on sidewalk in designated zone. I got Chief Roski, but I see Captain Paramore, so I'm guessing that you're here for him.
Good evening, council. So just to kinda briefly talk about how we got here, I was tasked with coming up with a solution to some of the issues that we're seeing in our downtown corridor with businesses being obstructed. So we look towards the Kennewick statute as they had one very similar to the one that we're proposing tonight. Know that we also have a second one, or a previous one that had come into effect, and it's the no camping ordinance, but that doesn't cover everything. This kinda helps encapsulate some of that. So the purpose of this, of this proposed ordinance is to keep the sidewalks and rightways free of obstruction for commerce, community health, and public safety. Some of the research that was done as we were preparing for this, as we reviewed some stuff from the Municipal Research and Service Center, MSRC, I reached out and contacted the Kennewick Prosecuting Attorney and asked him if they had any issues with the current ordinance, if there were any challenges to it. He told me that there were not and that a lot of their statute had been, the issues in previous statutes across the state had been addressed when they wrote theirs. Some of the issues that they cleaned up in theirs were time restrictions. So this is something that you can't have 24-hour ban on, sitting or lying on a sidewalk. So the ordinance drafted would go 6:00 AM to midnight, so when commerce was running. If someone has experienced a medical emergency or needed access to a wheelchair, obviously, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make criminal contact with them. Carves out some special things for parades and festivals. So if you have the downtown corridor like Peanuts Park shut down for a parade or carnival, people will be allowed to sit on the sidewalk then. Also, the bus stop, there's a bus stop zone on Columbia Street. It allows for people to be in and around that and seated, waiting for the bus to arrive. Permission, individuals can get permission from owners in the private area to sit, and that's a carve-out. And then one of the things that we wanna make clear is that this isn't something that we're just gonna roll in and if passed, start arresting people for sitting on the sidewalk. It's super important that warnings be given, people given the opportunity to leave. As I reached out to Kennewick PD and asked them how many custodial arrests they had made in their ordinance, and I think they made one over since 2018. And there were more criminal cases referred to the prosecuting attorney's office on their end for referral and then dealt with. I did bring, or had Mike Rio, our prosecuting attorney, show up. He's seated here. If you have any questions for him, he's available for that. But I think that covers pretty much what this ordinance entails. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Captain. Ms. Blais though?
Thank you. As far as warnings, if you're giving the same person warning after warning, is there a way to track that?
So I think we would have to handle each incident on a case-by-case basis. It's not something that we would, that would keep track of in history. It would be on that day, we contact them, we ask them to leave. If they leave, then it's done. And then if we come back later on, they're there over a 24-hour period, then we'd readdress it. So it's not something that we're gonna keep in a database.
Thank you, Captain. Mr. Peralas?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you, so this is something that you were tasked with. Do you feel like this is gonna be effective?
Yeah, so one of the issues that we have, as you know, is we just don't randomly contact citizens throughout their day and stop them and start speaking with them unless there is some kind of criminal matter or there's a law enforcement issue that we need to deal with. So if someone is sitting on the sidewalk and it doesn't fit our camping ordinance, there isn't much that we can do to move people on. I will tell you that one of the things that this statute does give us the authority to do is to make contact with those people and ask them to leave if they're sitting on the sidewalk.
So this would help out, I mean, like a big example is like Vieira's Bakery. There's people sitting right in front of their business all the time. This would assist you guys and able to tell them to move along?
Correct.
Okay.
Between the hours of 6:00 AM and midnight.
Which is a good, what, 18 hours?
Yep.
So that's a good amount of time. Okay, 'cause for me, it was, I looked at, I'm like, great, I mean, but it comes down to enforcement and when, if we're gonna do it. I'll just say this, I think we got some emails today. And in downtown, the campment seems like the last week or two is getting pretty bad. See a lot of campment on Columbia, over on Tacoma. And so, you know, we wanna give you guys the tools so we can clean up some of the stuff up because we get emails and phone calls from business owners, you know, and other places. But, you know, we, I think, this is a comment for staff, but, you know, I compare this to the Kennewick one that was implemented a year ago. And this wording is, I mean, word-for-word carbon copy. So there's a lot of different policies I've seen across the state. People get creative. And so I'm not saying we gotta implement all these types of policies, but if it could be easy like this, if we see something in another city that we do like, could we go ahead and use that language? Like in Spokane, they have like a souped-up jaywalking, some type of pedestrian interference. I mean, we're having a lot of problems with people in downtown walking across streets, stopping traffic. Over there, they make contact and they do it again, they get arrested. I get it, we don't wanna put those individuals in jail, it's probably not the best place for them, but it just gets to a point where we need to send a message. And so, I hope that doesn't sound bad to individuals, but, you know, we wanna be able to give you guys the tools because we've seen the pendulum have finally swung back to investing in these types of, you know, ordinances, investing back in police. And so I just wanted to make sure tonight that if this goes forward, that we actually are gonna see some movement and enforcement. Again, it's not gonna happen overnight. And so I just wanted to make sure, I hate seeing these things on the books, like we have no loitering. You know, I see people loiter all the time. Another thing, in an email today, we saw people sitting there with a whole bunch of beer out in the open, sitting there drinking in the North Plaza. So, I don't know, I mean, for me, it just, it really comes down to enforcement, I think, at the end of the day. But I'm glad to see this finally come forward. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Peralas.
Mr. Harpster?
Thanks, Captain Paramore. One thing that I think would be helpful, that I believe it was City of Spokane that did, was they codified a map as part of the ordinance. So it's easy for folks to just kinda add a glance, see, okay, it's this area. So it would just be one comment to possibly add. I happened to be at the council meeting when City Kennewick passed this ordinance. And one of the things that they talked about was the area they identified was Arthur Street to 395 on Clearwater. And the reason being was that was the area where they were getting the most calls for those types of stuff. So is this the area where we're getting the most calls for that? And are there other areas where you anticipate we may need to implement later in other parts of the city? Or see how this one goes and reevaluate at some point?
Yeah, so in doing my, so for the, for the purpose of the map, so if this is adopted by council and signed in the law, we're going to create cards that we would pass out to people as education with a map. We've done that before with our camping ordinance. And when I was a young baby cop, we had a prostitution ordinance where we would pass that out for the restricted zone within the city of Pasco. So that's something that we'll do. Secondly, we're sticking with the downtown area only because you have to be really careful with mixing the residential areas and business districts. So from my reading and my research on this, you have to stick to business districts with this type of statute because it would be really unfortunate to arrest people sitting on the sidewalk in front of their homes. So there is some areas within the downtown corridor that we have identified where we actually kept out because there's houses on that stretch of Clark Street specifically. So, but yes, if there were other business districts that we felt were problematic, we could come back to you guys and ask to add those.
Okay. And then one thing that's related to this, you know, the purpose is keep these sidewalks and things like that open for commerce. Well, then, you know, sort of a pseudo-commerce that's going on is the folks selling roses out of buckets on 68 in Burden. And I'd love somehow to do something to end that. That's as much of a distraction to drivers. And a lot of them are pretty bold, they'll walk right up to windows. So would love to hear thoughts down the road, not tonight, but at some point on, kinda like Councilman Peralas, which creative options that we can implement to end that. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, Mr. Rio, since you're here, do you have any thoughts or comments, concerns about what this might do to your workload or anything of that nature? You know, I mean, obviously, the primary concern is, I'm assuming you were involved with Mr. Ferguson in drafting and reviewing this, you comfortable with this?
I am, Your Honor. Your Honor, it's been that kinda day.
That's fine.
I'll call you, Your Honor.
That's fine.
It works. The, my partner Jessica Foltz was part of the drafting in Kennewick of this ordinance. So I'm very comfortable with its constitutionality. And, you know, one of the biggest pieces we have to proceed forward with is training of law enforcement so that we can have, help them to understand that this can't be just someone we don't like sitting on the sidewalk. It's everyone sitting on the sidewalk in these time, you know, in this time, place, and manner situation where you've got somebody between 6:00 AM, sorry, and midnight. That if it's a high school kid who's doing their homework, they can't sit in these places either, and we have to give them the opportunity to move along. It's not because we're trying to outlaw homelessness. It's we're not gonna allow people to sit or lie on the sidewalk during these time periods. And so it's when we get in trouble is when we have officers who are only enforcing against the people we don't like, in the sense of they're living in that location as opposed to I'm doing my homework, and we don't get to do that. It's application to all or application to none. And so that's one of the things that we need to do to make sure that this is constitutional going forward, is having that training and make sure officers know it gets applied to everyone across the board. But other than that, I believe it's constitutional and it's something, one more tool in the tool belt to help address these things, especially in this commercial zone.
Right on. I appreciate that, and I'm sure you'll work with PD to work on what that looks like as far as the education, internal education and training, right?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Appreciate both of you.
Thank you.
I do see Ms. Blaisdell pop her light on. Before we circle back, I'm gonna check Mr. Grimm, if that's okay? You're good, Mr. Rio. Mr. Grimm, do you have any questions, comments?
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to thank Captain Paramore for his work on this. If he would also pass on my gratitude to Chief Roski. Obviously, there's more work to do, but this is a great step in the right direction and I'm really happy we're going hopefully forward with this. So count me in, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Ms. Blais though?
My only concern regarding the map, is there a way we could include Cork Street on that as well so we're not pushing them down further? Because I know around Albertson's, Elsa's own, that area, we have a high amount of homeless that, could we include that area in this as well?
So, so like my comment before of there being residential mixed in with commercial, there definitely is higher density residential in those intersections. We can look to see if that's something that we can add, depending on the parts where there is only commercial. We can, we can look at that.
Thank you. I appreciate it, or we appreciate it, Captain Paramore. Mr. Ferguson, do you have anything to add to this, since it's?
Well, sure, I'd hate to sit here and not get to talk about something. But no, the only thing I would just let folks know is, there is, and a couple times, Councilmember Grimm has mentioned the Grants Pass case. Excuse me, that will be, Supreme Court has heard that, US Supreme Court. So that should give us some clarity. This really is a separate kind of issue that we're dealing with. So in other words, this, what we're talking about in terms of limiting the ability to sit and lie during certain times and in certain zones isn't addressed in the Martin v. Boise and then the Johnson Grants Pass case. Those cases are gonna focus more on sleeping and camping and what paraphernalia is allowed or not allowed. It will be really interesting to see how that comes out with the US Supreme Court because listening to the arguments, I didn't listen to all two hours of it, but it sounds like it's gonna be a pretty interesting decision. So the Ninth Circuit was really the pioneer on this, bringing this kind of analysis forward. And of course, they're obviously one of the most, or they are the most overturned circuit of the 13. So anyway, long and short of it is, it'll be really interesting to see what that says. I don't think it would affect this, or Mike and I had a nice long conversation about this. We don't think there's anything in that decision that would invalidate this in any way because we think this is already compliant with those cases. So even if that was overturned, we would still be in good shape. But courts can do funny things, so, but we would definitely be on the lookout.
Thank you, I appreciate that. With that, do we have any public comment on this issue? Let's see, you had nods. Mr. Grandbois, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and council and staff. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. Thomas Grandbois, Big Maple Properties, 108 North Fourth Avenue in Pasco. I wanted to thank PD for putting this together, and I wanna thank you all for considering this. It's, you know, there's no one, one solution. And this, like it was mentioned, this is another tool in the tool belt for the police. And, you know, I really wanna stress to any of my fellow business owners that if they do experience something like this, like these issues, I want them to call the police, call code enforcement. I want them to call the police, call code enforcement, let them know what's going on. Um, there was a large encampment started out, out on, um, Columbia and First. I noticed the other day, I contacted Lieutenant Petty John, who did an excellent job. He communicated that right away. And it was cleaned up like that, and Code Enforcement was able to get out and get the streets cleaned. So it, I, I think it takes everybody involved. There's a, there's a fine line between overpolicing and, uh, and good policing. And I think that getting the businesses involved is the most important thing. You know, not just contacting your council members, because council members, and sorry, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the people that are watching, um, because you guys can't direct individual staff members to do things. But business owners can absolutely show up to business watch meetings, get to know their local area resource officer, get to know, uh, their lieutenants in the area. And the better that they communicate, the, the quicker that they're able to get on things. Um, again, PD and Code Enforcement have done an amazing job. So has, uh, Parks. I have to give a specific shout out to, uh, Park Ranger Steve. He does an excellent job as well. Um, but yeah, just please encourage everybody to, to report, call non-emergency, call nine one one if they feel the need. Or ask, actually use Ask Pasco as well. Ask Pasco has been an incredible, uh, tool that I've, I've seen with great response. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Grandbois. Let us know if you wanna apply for our PR person. I'm working with Mr. Funfire, who does a heck of a job, John. Just teasing. Uh, do we have any other public comment? Going once, going twice, sold. With that, uh, to all involved, thank you very much. Um, presumably, we're gonna move forward with this next week. I see a head nod from the city manager. And, uh, I guess just one parting comment, Captain. It sounds like as we work on the educational piece, that it's external facing, um, you know, I, I do think we need to take with seriousness what Mr. Grandbois said is not just educating the individuals that might have enforcement, uh, against them, but also the business owners. To, here's how you can help us help you. Uh, I'm sure you've already thought of that, but I think, you know, it's worth just, uh, I, I, I appreciate what Mr. Grandbois had to say, and I think that's something that we'll wanna work on is expanding the belt of the tool. Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we're gonna move on to item B, which is resolution. First Amendment to Exclusive Agreement with Redflex Traffic Systems, Inc. for photo enforcement. Uh, also listed as Chief Roski, but not seeing him still. Presumably, that's you, Captain.
Okay, uh, so with the, uh, um, the Redflex cameras, uh, we entered into a four-year contract four years ago, uh, to have them, uh, do the, uh, photo enforcement, uh, with, uh, two of our major intersections that are two worst intersections for collisions in the city of Pasco at twentieth and Cork Street and sixty-eight and Burden Boulevard. Um, that contract is expiring, and they are, uh, going month by month with a lease, uh, as we, uh, pull data and, uh, make a determination on, um, if they're being effective. So that's the nuts and bolts of it. And then as soon as we get that report back, that will be presented to council.
Thank you, Captain. All right. With that, I see Mr. Prowls. Thank you, Mayor. What is, do you know what the top you have with the cost for month to month is?
So I, I, I don't, uh, off the top of my head, what we're, what we're, uh, paying monthly for, uh, for the camera systems.
So we're just really looking to see if it's been working or we're reading on data, like a study?
Right. So the, uh, try, trying to, trying to see if it's, if it's affecting, uh, collisions in those intersections.
And then just one more question. I was wondering, is it possible cameras at crosswalks?
So, uh, the statutes are very specific on where we can have them. Um, it has to be arterials. It, uh, has to be at specific intersections. Studies have to be done. We can have them in school zones. I think based, it's based off of population. So for every ten thousand, uh, population base, you can have a school zone, uh, photo enforcement camera. Again, um, there has to be, uh, a study done, uh, to determine if it's, if it's, uh, valuable to have it in there to help with speeding.
Yeah, I just, I see a lot of like their, for their crosswalks, like over off of Road sixty and Burden. Um, you know, someone pushes the button and it flashes and no one stops. I mean, I saw it yesterday. Literally a kid's waiting to drive, to ride his bike across, the people just keep on going. It's flashing. So I was like, huh, I wonder if a camera could be put there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowls. Mr. Harpster.
Uh, how long do you anticipate it'll take to compile the data? Be able to make that?
I think it's gonna be a couple of months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, just one other comment. I like that you, you mentioned we're looking at, uh, reduced rated collisions, not how many infractions have been issued. Um, that, that's, you know, the big picture that we're trying to reduce. So, thanks.
Yep. I, I appreciate both of your comments, because I think that's the most important thing that can be to the public is we're seeking here, uh, not necessarily for strict enforcement. This is the question whether or not we've effectively decreased the number of collisions and made those intersections safer. And, uh, hopefully that data will bear out. And certainly, whether it does or doesn't, that'll be the question for Councilor Russell with after we've, uh, after you've provided that to us and presented. So, uh, Mr. Grimm, do you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for asking.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add that, uh, to Councilmember Prowls' question. It looks like it's, uh, twenty thousand five hundred dollars a month for the, the system.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Captain. Uh, I seen, uh, well, I guess, yeah, with that, uh, do we have any public comments on this issue? Going once, going twice, sold. There are no public comments on this issue. That'll move us along to item C, which is Road forty east extension update, and this is from Director Sarah. Thanks for your time, Captain. And Mr. Rios and your partner or associate.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So this item relates to the Road forty east extension. And it's an update to where the project is, uh, at this time and where it's heading. So you're seeing in the screen, eh, an aerial view of the location of the proposed, uh, road. This project was included in our TIP a few years ago, and we had money allocated in the budget to allow for the construction of this road. This road will effectively connect A Street with Lewis Place to allow for that intersection that right now is a T-intersection to become a full cross intersection. And allowing for some of the industrial freight traffic to reach Lewis, uh, Place and eventually the interchange with US twelve. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, as, uh, you know, we have been working on right-of-way acquisition along the corridor. We have acquired some right-of-way, but we have found, um, some difficulty reaching an agreement with one of the property owners along the corridor, and therefore the segment that is shown in yellow has not been acquired at this time. We had, uh, several years of interactions and, um, during last year, we had a right-of-way agent to help us with the negotiations for that land. Yet our negotiations were not fruitful, and we have not reached an agreement. Therefore, uh, looking at the alternatives and the imminent need, uh, of this connection, we are proposing, next slide, please. We are proposing, um, a one-way street built with one lane and wide, um, shoulders to allow for that northbound traffic to reach Lewis Place. And then the interchange, as I explained, um, this project, if built with this configuration, would, uh, cost about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for construction costs. There are some design costs that are yet to be incurred. And this section would allow for, again, only northbound traffic. The, um, western section of the right-of-way will not be built at this time, but could be then, uh, accomplished as development or redevelopment occurs along that corridor. Um, this configuration would allow for northbound traffic, for freight, mainly focusing on the, on the freight component in this corridor. Um, hopefully alleviating the left turns from the south segment of this road onto A Street. And the wide, uh, shoulders would allow for, in case of emergency, to be able to bypass those vehicles that are maybe stopped in the road. Um, this fits within the budget proposed, and this is, this is the way the project is proposed to move forward. Next slide. And I think that's it for tonight. I'm happy to answer questions or provide any more, uh, context.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, Director Sarah, if we go this route, I just, I'm sure it will be the case, but we're unsure that there'll be clear signs that indicate that it's a one-way travel only. Okay. That's it. Thanks.
Yes, I appreciate that question. Actually, I should have mentioned that we had our traffic engineer evaluate, um, this configuration. And yes, additional signing and some educational efforts will occur before the road is open. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Grimm.
No, thank you, sir. I'm fine.
Okay. Uh, seeing no further council, let's, do we have any public comment? Going once, any public comment going twice, any public comment going three times? With that, there is no public comment on this. Thank you, Director Sarah. We'll move on to item D, which is franchise agreement, US Cellular, and this is going to be Director Gonzalez.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayors and, uh, members of council. Um, wanted to provide council with a brief overview, very brief overview of the franchise, uh, requirements as outlined in the Pasco Municipal Code. I believe this is the first time we've discussed franchise agreements, um, but before council. And, um, as outlined in Pasco Municipal Code, uh, chapter fifteen dot four zero, um, provides, uh, the, uh, requirements for franchise, uh, essentially the, all utility providers, uh, including communication and telecommunication services must obtain a franchise agreement from the city of Pasco to operate within the city, uh, within the city's jurisdiction, adhering to local, state and federal laws. Um, there's provisions for the use of the right-of-way, um, franchise limits, uh, and also the application and permitting process. So wanted to provide a very brief overview about that and then hand it off to, uh, Eric Ferguson for, uh, the rest of the presentation for council. Thank you.
Sorry, that was my cue. I didn't get that.
Uh, I was gonna say, that's all right.
Okay, yeah, so, uh, I'll, I'll try to, uh, make the, give you the abbreviated version of this. But essentially what happened, uh, this is, this is a new one, so we wanna take a little time and kinda walk through it a little bit. Um, it's a new one, not only just for this council, but also for the city. Uh, small wireless facilities, uh, were, uh, a really big, uh, topic at the, uh, the end of the two thousand teens, uh, uh, and there was some, uh, federal legislation that then subsequently ended up in what, what's referred to as an FCC ruling, which, uh, determined that, uh, local governments, uh, no longer had the ability uh, to, uh, to not allow, uh, these small wireless facilities in their right-of-ways. Now, um, it was not really clearly defined what that would mean in terms of what that rollout would look like with, uh, certain design standards and certain things that would need to take place. Uh, my predecessor Lee Kerr, uh, had, was also the hearing examiner out, uh, for Walla Walla. And so he, uh, really wanted to be kind of on the, the front end of this, uh, kinda the wave that everybody anticipated was gonna be coming with regard to these smart wireless facilities. And, uh, one of the things he did was he drafted our ordinance, uh, and really it had to be, uh, really drafted, uh, quickly, uh, comprehensively and quickly. So, uh, and the reason why was that there was gonna be some deadlines that kicked in in, uh, two thousand nineteen, that if you didn't have something already on your books, uh, you were kinda gonna get whatever they, uh, whatever they decided kinda thing. So that was really the goal. Uh, so I guess what, the reason why I'm telling you that is that our ordinance still needs some work. Uh, we got some areas where we, we're trying to fix some things. We have retained, uh, uh, an outside, uh, legal counsel, uh, who's, who specializes in this area, Daniel Kenny, uh, and he's helped us with this agreement. But this is really the first one we've gone through. Uh, we've, I've been able to spot some areas in the code that are gonna need to be tweaked, uh, and we'll, we'll be coming back to you with, uh, some changes there. But, uh, long and short of it is, uh, this is the first one for the city of Pasco. I'm sure folks have seen these, uh, small wireless facilities, these, these small antennas. It's really, uh, under fifty feet, uh, and I won't even attempt to try to get into the specifics of, uh, the three, the three cubic feet for, for one portion of it, the twenty-eight cubic feet for any other support, uh, power structures, those types of things. Uh, but we have some very good design standards in our code, uh, and so Daniel's been able to work, uh, with US Cellular, and, and they've been, uh, uh, great to work with. Uh, they're excited to be able to do this rollout, uh, and then be able to, uh, so the first thing that they're doing, just so we're all kinda clear on where we're at on the map, the first thing they're doing is getting the franchise and going through this process, which is essentially the right to be in the right-of-ways in the entire city and then the future annexed areas. So they'll be able to, to have that general franchise, and then they'll, they'll come in with their particular permits, and those will be reviewed individually and they'll go through that process. So this is just kinda, uh, cracking the seal on it and getting it started. Uh, but it will be, uh, it will be limited. It won't be, uh, a franchise in the sense of, uh, the ability to, uh, you know, tear up streets, you know, all around town, you know, laying cable, those types of things. This is for small wireless facilities. So it's a, uh, it's a limited franchise, but, uh, also a very important one that, uh, we're gonna, uh, see more of in the future. So, uh, with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Uh, Mr. Prowls. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I talked with the city manager Lincoln earlier, just, I was doing some research and I saw a couple, uh, examples of franchise agreements over on the west side, and they had sections in there in regards to administrative fees. So that would kinda recoup costs, you know, for review and stuff like that. And so I was gonna put that out there as a, uh, addition to this. I think it's, I mean, we're gonna have to, looks like tweak our own code and stuff like that, and it set a precedent going forward. So we could record, you know, the, or recoup the amount of money we're gonna have to do to rev, um, review these types of agreements. And then also, I was wondering if the fifty thousand dollar bond was gonna be sufficient, and if maybe that could be bigger. Maybe seventy-five to a hundred thousand. A couple, uh, contracts I saw on the west side were seventy-five and a hundred K. So, just, I don't, I just wanna put that out there.
Great. Yeah, no, I, I know both of those topics have come up during the, uh, the negotiations with US Cellular and, uh, Mr. Kenny. And I, I don't recall off the top of my head, uh, what the, uh, concern was related to the administrative fee. There are certain fees that we can directly, uh, have the franchisee, uh, take on for this process, for having to go through this process and, and spend the money to, to do that. But, uh, I don't know if that's something that, uh, Mr. Kenny is gonna be suggesting as a code revision, or if that's something that, uh, we just don't have the authority to do right now. But I can certainly find that out before we come back.
Thank you, Mr. Prowls, Mr. Ferguson. Anybody else? Seeing none. Uh, that moves us on to item number seven, which is miscellaneous, oh, I guess, excuse me. Do we have any public comment on this? Do we have any public comment on this? Oh, do we have any public comment on this? Hearing none. Mr. Grimm, do you have anything, uh, that you'd like to add here?
Nothing to add on this topic. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Now with that, we will officially move on to item number seven, which was miscellaneous council discussion. Uh, Mr. Lincoln, I see your light.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez has a couple more updates for you.
Yes, um, good evening, mayors and members of council. Wanted to share, um, a really fun event that, uh, took place this past weekend on Saturday at the, uh, Kersman Park, uh, neighborhood. Um, staff from the, uh, Community Economic Development Department, specifically Code Enforcement, um, have initiated a, uh, program, uh, intended to go out in the community and help with, uh, assisting residents and businesses with cleaning up, um, uh, the, their neighborhoods, picking up litter, picking up debris, providing information about city services related to enforcement, um, safety hazards, et cetera. Um, roughly fifty volunteers were in attendance on Saturday. Heard it was pretty hot. Um, uh, over, uh, nine organizations were represented from across entire tri-cities, which is pretty cool. Um, and again, staff and volunteers engage with residents. There's food, games, uh, and certainly a lot of informational resources provided to folks. Um, and, uh, even connected folks with Franklin, uh, PUD and the Franklin County Weed Control, um, for the resources that they have available. So a pretty cool effort that actually was, uh, funded from the, uh, Community Development Block Program. I'm have a, I think a couple of pictures on the next slide as well. Um, and the idea is to hopefully do one more of these this year and then reevaluate and see how maybe we can expand and enhance this effort. Um, but really, uh, awesome, um, I thought, event, um, led by several of our, our, our own staff. And just wanted to share that with council this evening. It was received very well.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, do we have anything further from staff?
I've got one, there should be one more slide, um, related to an update, um, on the, uh, Small Business Relief Program related to the Lewis Street Overpass, uh, construction project. Um, this was the relief program that, um, uh, that council approved, uh, to reallocate roughly three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, from the Lewis Street, second and fifth project, uh, to assisting businesses, um, impacted by the, uh, the construction. Um, to date, um, as of today, um, there's been twelve applications that have been received. There's one currently being reviewed. Um, six applications have been approved at approximately eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, five applications have been denied with all, um, five, the, uh, the reason being, um, that they are outside of the boundary. In fact, a couple of them are just across the street, um, but there is a boundary that staff has shared with all applicants, and fortunately they don't meet the criteria. They've been within the boundary. Uh, we're still actively promoting, uh, the, uh, the effort. Um, there's a deadline of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, there's still a substantial amount of funds, uh, remaining, and just wanted to provide council with an update on where this is at. And, um, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comments? Uh, about this particular issue? Yes, Mr. Prowls.
So, um, question, comment, request. Um, being that we, there is twelve applicant, applicants, uh, six approved. Um, and those that have been denied because they're outside of the relief boundary, uh, lines that we set. Um, and those that have been denied because they're outside of the relief boundary, uh, lines that we set. So, my request would be for council to reconsider, now that we're, uh, you know, almost the deadline, if we would, uh, consider, uh, extending that boundary line to allow at least these five to apply before the deadline. Well, that's my request, uh, for something for council to reconsider. Um, again, being that the deadline is just around the corner, it would allow these people to, uh, potentially apply and, and hopefully qualify, uh, for, for some relief. So, it's, it's out there for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prowls. I, I guess, uh, directing that question to staff, if we were to seek to accommodate that, uh, aside from direction from council, what all would you need, uh, that would not make it somehow problematic?
Uh, we can, um, we, we were planning to come to you next week to see if you'd like to extend, um, the deadline, uh, which is the end of June. Uh, and, um, and see if there's interest in waiting out a little bit more to see if other people have had their tax documents ready and, and all of that. We do have few people, uh, as you can see, who are outside of the relief, um, boundary. And, um, if you did expand that, we probably would capture a few more businesses. Um, it, it would, I believe, um, i- it would not really change our process per se. Uh, we would be needing to look at exactly how much of the funds expire. There's about sixty thousand, but we can do some accounting there and come back to council next week with exact impacts.
Okay. Um, Mr. Prowls, I see your light.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just had a questions in regards to the applications. I mean, we didn't, we don't have a lot of information on those five that were denied. I mean, the top of your head, were they denied because they were outside the boundary and they would have qualified? You know, I'd hate for you guys to go through all this trouble and they, then it, either way, they don't qualify based on the merits of application, so, you know.
Y- yes, and I confirm this with, um, uh, our Community Development Block and Administrator is that, uh, these five in particular, um, all the, the reasons that they did not qualify was due to the being outside the boundary. There were several that are right across the street.
Anything else? Okay, sounds good. Mr. Grimm?
Um, no, not on this issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, I'm gonna circle back to you, Ms. Prowls. Uh, are you seeking maybe some sort of formal action to direct staff, uh, tonight? Uh, that next week when they bring this back to contemplate the extension of the boundaries or do you want to wait till next week? How do you want to handle that?
Just, oh, two things. Yes, we could move forward and, and have via you directing staff, uh, to bring back, I guess, the numbers of, of what, um, how much money is, is still available to be allocated for the people that apply? Uh, if it's still the, the, what is it, the five denied because, specifically because of their being outside the boundary line? If we could revisit that, uh, situation. Again, we're not looking to bend the rules for anyone in particular, not looking for any changes in the process whatsoever. Just allowing those that are outside the boundary lines to, to apply for the, for the benefits.
Uh, I mean, I guess they've, they've applied, we want them, what it's, I guess fundamentally you're seeking to extend the boundary to allow them to meet the criteria, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I, I guess we're here, we're talking about it.
Not the deadline.
Yeah, they're coming back next week, uh, they being staff is coming back next week. Um, what's the appetite from council to extend the boundary or, uh, at least direct staff to address that next week? And then maybe, obviously, we can't, um, take formal action now. I guess, uh, my position is I'm open to, uh, asking staff to address the boundary issue and these five ap- uh, any applicants. Um, I'm amenable to having that conversation. Mr. Prowls?
I'd be in favor of supporting, uh, council, uh, member Prowls's ask, so, I'd be in favor of that. I'd like to see the boundaries and where they lie.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Milne?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. On the, where the five other people are at, I know you said two are across the street, how close are the other three to being in this, uh, this zone?
I, I think the further, there was one application just east of, uh, of the overpass along Oregon Avenue. Um, I think the furthest, um, applicant is just east of Tenth Avenue, uh, in, along Lewis Street or so.
Okay, well, I'm open to extending the deadline and, uh, definitely willing to, to talk about this. I just don't want to open up some Pandora's box where a whole bunch of people jump in on it just because we've widened it so much. Um, you know, the main thing was to help the people that we knew a hundred percent were being affected by this. So, I'm open to see what you guys come up with and if it makes sense, I just want to be smart with the money and, uh, um, that's what I think we should do.
So, to clarify, Ms. Prowls's question was more the boundaries, not the deadline? You mentioned the deadline.
Yeah, I'm fine with, uh, if we need to move the, the deadline to give people a better chance. No, not the deadline?
We're not talking about the deadline, we're talking about the boundaries.
Boundaries, okay, yes.
Are you, okay.
My request is to extend the boundary, not the deadline.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. But, uh...
That's fine, man. I just want to make sure that you...
I guess a hearing aid is in my future, um, but, uh...
Another motorcycle.
Yeah, it's those pipes, um, but yes. Let's, uh, I am willing to talk about that, so, thank you.
Okay.
I, I, Mr. Mayor, sorry, um, I do have a clarifying question.
Yeah.
Uh, in terms of the direction. Um, if you, if you are looking to see, um, is, is your request specific for the five businesses that have been declined? Um, or are you looking to expand the area overall so it allows for new businesses who might have not previously applied to then apply?
Um, so here's, here's my position. I think having a map, having, uh, a heat map of these additional businesses would be helpful. Like, here's the boundary, here's where they are. And then I think, uh, we would want to discuss that unless you're talking about more generic. I think it, it'd be wise, again, just, uh, pockmark it with the, the twelve that have applied. Um, maybe potentially the thirteenth is, it, I'm seeing twelve of them pending. And then here the box, here's where everyone is, here's in, here's out. And then we could contemplate, okay, like Mr. Milne said, we could have that open conversation, excuse me, that open conversation about, um, well, you know, is this really within the ambit of what we've, we've sought? Um, you know, obviously we made the decision once and now we're contemplating whether or not we need to revise that.
Sounds good, thank you.
Mayor, um, my suggestion when I said, uh, expanding the boundary line was not to go citywide. Um, it was, um, we were presented with the map and initially it was suggested up until second, if I'm not mistaken, second in Oregon. If we could just open it to those two, um, streets, so just one block, I guess it would be one block on either side. Um, if these five are within that boundary line, perfect. Um, but beyond that, I would like to see how they would, they are, they were impacted, um, outside of that specific boundary line. I know we had a long conversation back and forth about impact and, and impact to their business and livelihood. And so, anything outside that discussed area, it, it would, I don't know, I feel it would be difficult to, um, prove. Uh, um, hardships. Uh, I'm sure they're there, but not as impacted as the people that were immediately in front of it. I hope that helps.
Yeah, Mr. Ferguson?
Yeah, just to clarify real quick to, to base, to kind of piggyback off what the deputy city manager is saying, that as long as your deadline is still open and you expand the boundary, you're, you are now opening up to not just these five, but then anyone else in that area. And whether these folks have been denied and would need to reapply, we probably would want to, uh, think about that, uh, at, you know, proactively. So, just, just so you know, uh, it won't be specific to these applicants, it will be to the area.
Okay, I think that's reasonable. Um, I, I guess the question is, uh, staff, are you comfortable with the direction that's been provided?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
I think my other question is, um, how long will this make next week's meeting? I think, uh, you know, obviously we'll want to be sensitive to making sure that folks are met, needs met, are met and moving from there. Mr. Grimm, did I already ask you for any comment on this?
Um, you know, I, I have some of the same concerns that have been expressed, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, I hate to see somebody get turned down that's right across the street from the boundary. But on the other hand, we have to draw a boundary somewhere and somebody's gonna get left out of this. And, um, I, I just think we should make that decision sooner than later. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Um, do you have any other, um, comment at this point for miscellaneous?
No, thank you. Thank you for asking though, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, sounds like we've got a direction. We'll talk about it next week and see where it falls. Um, Mr. Harpster?
Yeah, so, speaking of cleaning up, like Director Gonzalez mentioned a few minutes ago, um, residents, I know Mr. Prowls has mentioned several times, lots of people reaching out to him, nobody really reaches out to me that often. But, um, I did have three different individuals send me multiple different photos this morning of Peanuts Park. And, um, I'm usually only there Saturday mornings for Farmer's Market and so I had no idea how absolutely horrible and disgusting it is there. And, um, there's obvious drug use going on, uh, open alcohol containers, trash, underwear, fighting amongst the people hanging out there. Um, and it's just awful. So, I, I don't know where they all go on Saturday mornings, I don't see them there, but they seem to be there a lot. And I took Louis coming in today, uh, to see what it looked like and it was a lot of the same folks that were in the photos were there still this evening, just hanging out, acting a fool, I mean, no other way to put it. And so, um, one of my concerns is that school's getting out this week and there's four schools within a two-mile radius of that area. And, um, I want to live in a city where our kids can walk around and hang out at the freaking park and not worry about that kind of behavior going on. And so, love to have a discussion, um, tonight or in the next couple of weeks and hear from, uh, uh, PD and Parks and Rec on their thoughts and their, uh, options. And, 'cause I would like to hear from all the other councilors what they'd like to do. We haven't, um, codified our goals yet, so there's time to, uh, add some, uh, priority to that. And then, um, really want to hear what Chief Roskin, Director Rice, uh, what their thoughts are and, um, uh, put together a plan to, in that, so. Yeah, we don't need to get into it tonight, but the next couple of weeks would be great.
We can, we can absolutely put that together. We can talk a little bit briefly about the, um, there, there are some funds that are set aside to, to do some work in, in Peanuts North in particular, um, and, and we can give, give kind of a preview there. But, um, I agree that having, uh, the PD also weigh in on it would be prudent. All right, um, Mr. Prowls?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. Yeah, no, I hundred percent agree with Councilmember Harpster. I went, I went and went down to Farmer's Market this weekend and I ended up going back to go take some pictures. I met with the owners of Dark Angel Performance, um, because they were having some encampment issues and they've made them go away with, actually, uh, they put up a speaker with some annoying sounds and they eventually moved. So, Councilmember Milne was on to something at one point. Um, but, I mean, either way, you know, they were really frustrated and they reached out to Pasco PD and they came and assisted. But, I mean, I had to tell my daughter to look away 'cause someone was urinating in the middle of the road. So, I mean, it's coming a fever pitch and, and I didn't see the encampment as bad as it has been in years. I mean, there's just spots, but, I mean, they're definitely invading the downtown and, and I know I'm in favor of the North Plaza. Um, you know, we're putting money into that, but not if it's gonna have, you know, not if we're just creating a place for our public spaces to be overtaken by that type of stuff. So, um, I'm definitely in favor of having a meeting where we can talk about it with, um, PD, staff and stuff and just kind of get creative and figure out ways to, I mean, get these individuals to help. Um, I think one thing I talk, I've seen people talk about is educating the public about not getting, getting, giving these individuals money and stuff and navigating them towards resources. And we're getting there, you know, this area does not have the infrastructure created to assist these individuals. But, um, like tonight's, uh, endeavor with the ordinance is a good start. But, yeah, I think definitely this could be one of those issues that overtakes the summer. I hope not, uh, you know, our, our business here, but we definitely need to start addressing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowls. Ms. Blaisdell?
Thank you. Um, I will say this, I drive through downtown every single morning. I, um, get coffee on the east side of Pasco and I just go up and down the street. Sometimes before seven, not very often, up until like nine-thirty to ten. And it seems like within the last week, there is more people that I've never seen before. So, I just feel like that they're getting brought here and they're new to the area, I'm not sure. But, um, recently, I think it was Sunday morning, um, I saw a lady walking the Walk of Shame at like about seven-thirty in the morning. She had brand-new clothes on, um, and her wig was crooked. Um, and I'd never seen her before and then coincidentally, I get an email Sunday night and she's in those pictures. So, um, it's a concern, downtown is a concern 'cause it is in my district. Um, I go to Farmer's Market every Saturday and I just drive through, um, before I park just to see where they're congregating. Um, and again, I don't know the answers, but I can tell you that I am bugging Pasco PD and they're wonderful to work with, um, but they're the people that have to deal with this day in and day out. And kudos to you guys, but I don't know how we can solve this other than what, um, Captain Paramore just presented us t- today, so.
Thank you, Ms. Blaisdell, Ms. Br- um, Mr. Ms. Prowl saying, so sorry.
I am, I can be a mister, I guess. Um, so, no, I cannot. Um, but this is an invite to the community, um, totally off-topic of everything that's been said already. Um, a proclamation will be read this Saturday at Juneteenth, so it's an invite to the community to Kurtzman Park, uh, starting at ten, I believe they have their, uh, parade going on at ten, if I'm not mistaken, ten-eleven. Uh, but the event goes on until about six PM, so you're all invited, community, come out, show up, support. Uh, Juneteenth celebration happening this Saturday, uh, at Kurtzman Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prowls. I was gonna hop on that, but I appreciate it. And you will be in attendance for me, right?
I will.
So, you will be the one reading the proclamation. I do believe it's at eleven. Um, and then the parade begins and then at noon, uh, the festivities with, I, I saw free food, um, but I, I'm not, don't hold me to that one. Um, there will be, uh, several other activities that week. Um, Miss Juneteenth Scholarship Program in Chihuahua High on, uh, the fourteenth, which is the day prior, at six PM. And then, um, several day of service, uh, on Wednesday between eleven and one at Kurtzman Park, as well as a, a Royal Arena Skate Party on the nineteenth, um, four to seven PM and seven to ten PM, for the earlier one being for fifteen and under, and then the later one being for fifteen and up. Um, with that, I see no further lights. Uh, the great news is we have, uh, whopping twenty-five-minute executive session. Do we have anything else from, uh, staff before I move on to executive session? Okay. Item number eight is exec- executive session. And with that, we do have discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation under RCW forty... Uh, does anyone need a break ahead of that? Okay, seeing the heads not, um, are negative here. Uh, current or potential litigation under RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero subsection one, Roman numeral one, or I. For twenty-five minutes, it's now about eight-ten. That'll take us to eight-thirty-five. We'll have the city attorney, the city manager, deputy city manager, and, uh, chief. Uh, so with that, we will be in executive session until eight-thirty-five.
It is eight thirty five and we're going to extend executive session for another ten minutes so we'll be in until eight forty five. Thank you.